That I can, we have a very detailed presentation on the website of each step. So, starting with preliminary review, that's where you're kind of making into the planning entitlement stage. That's when you get your planning commission for your project, building approval from the building chief and then licensing is where you get your business license and you open. So, this is the process in a one, two, three, four easy, easy steps. There's more to it than that, but my job is to help the community understand this process and help them through the process. The next macro level item is a new development map. So, this is included in the quarterly update and will also be providing printed copies and copies on the city's social media. This highlights commercial development as well as residential development happening currently in Yuba City or within the last quarter. And it shows which locations these developments are. So, if you hear of different subdivisions or different businesses, it's, it's nice to be able to pinpoint it. So, in our building division, there marketplace on the mayor's bus tour last week, we behind the scenes look at the Dutch Brothers project open in the next couple of months. They will be followed by Dutch Brothers and then the Arco AMPM. Their permits are ready to issue, but they have not issued that permit yet. We have projected to double our single this graph shows you the last several years houses that were built compared is the projections for this year. So, we're more than last year and it's projected part to the several single family subdivisions that are under construction currently. Another major project coming out of Development Services and specifically Planning is a general plan update. This is a refresh update. So, the general plan is a framework to guide development in the city. It goes through several elements of how the city development should look, what individual buildings should look like, the zoning, et cetera. And the, the general plan refresh that is currently in process right now is an update to the 2004 plan and it will include updates such as including the Bochert Master Plan in the general plan. In planning, there are several entitlements under review. I don't have to go through all of these, but one of the big ones is Dean Ranch, which is proposed to be a senior housing project with housing at different levels of assisted housing. So, you know, variety of assistance provided as well as some mixed use elements. So, think of offices, potentially medical offices right there at the, the housing area. So, it's all walkable for, for the senior community. Several projects have recently been approved, one of which is the Newcom South subdivision in the Bochert Master Plan. This is for 234 residential Master Plan area. And then Johnson Ranch and Butte Vista Estates are next to each other on West Onstop Frontage Road, just north of the drainage basin there. And Johnson Ranch is currently working on site work and then Butte Vista will, will follow shortly after. Building project that we don't really see because going on right now is associated or North subdivision and that's so you can see on this map, the section in green is grant funded and that will section in yellow is what D.R. Horton, the developer, is responsible. This is also working on a and this will include extension and relocation of the affected services and then stubs for future service connections. Our Code Enforcement Division is hard at work keeping the city looking good, doing cleanup projects, partnering with different, I forgot what SRCC stands for in the heat of the moment, but partnering with different groups to do cleanup, to enforce code requirements, and then the special assessment lien, which City Council approved recently, which will be approximately $34,000 in liens. So, that kind of wraps up my quarterly update for you. It is available online like I mentioned. And if anyone has any questions, City Council particularly, but community as well, my contact information is on this slide. Please feel free to reach out to me about, if you have questions about what's going on in Yuba City and I'm happy to take any questions. Thank you.
Good, Mayor. Ashley, when you attended the Yuba Sutter Economic Development, what did you take away from that?
That's a great question that I'm not prepared for. Um, I did, uh, I did go to the SEDS Committee. So, that's the comprehensive economic development strategy meeting. And it was a great opportunity to talk with people from different organizations, to talk, to talk with people who are on the government side and who are not on the government side about things that they'd like to see in the community. What I mostly took away is I, I mostly was trying to listen because I am, some of the keys that will be helped sponsored with that $5,000 would be the signature yellow T-shirts, printed materials for outreach and sustainable cleanup tools, which include the garbage pickers and the recycled buckets that would feature the city's logo. The amended community sponsorship policy allocates a yearly budget of $20,000 for community contributions and that would be 5,000 quarterly. The current budget right now has $20,000 for community contributions and quarter two would be for Saylove of 5,000, which would leave the remaining balance of $15,000. The sponsorship would utilize that community contribution account number, which is there. Alternatives would be, one, do not authorize the monetary sponsorship request. Two, approve the monetary sponsorship request with changes, or three, provide staff with an alternate direction. Recommendation tonight is to consider the sponsorship request from Saylove and if approved, adopt a resolution to approve the monetary sponsorship for 5,000. Thank you. Any questions?
Questions from council? Any questions from the public on the item or comments? All right, we'll come back to council for discussion and/or emotion.
Through the mayor.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Christie, for presenting this and bringing it forward tonight. Great job by you. And I, before I say anything else, I think Saylove does a lot of good things for our, our community regionally wide. The question that I really have is getting back to what the intent with these funds were that we straightened out about four or five years ago, I think it was, Mark. And the idea was to help a lot of various organizations in our community and not just be giving to one organization. And I really struggled with tonight for the simple fact that all the good things Saylove does, at our last meeting, we gave them 2,500, I believe. And that's all they asked for. And at that point, that previous slide, if you roll back right there, was shown that we had a different pot of money. And then all of a sudden, here comes an additional request for here another five next month. Fundraiser of the year. And with what was presented, there wasn't a specific need that is directed to this, more yellow T-shirts. They have a ton of yellow T-shirts. They have a ton of garbage pickers. They've, they've been doing this for a while. So, you know, it's, right now, I can't get behind it for the simple fact of, wanted 7,500, they should have asked for it two weeks ago, not 25 and then come back and hit us for another five. And then the larger thing that I think the council needs to consider is when we give to organizations, because when we worked the program or worked this policy the first time, we set a limit and all of a sudden the money was gone within like a month, the very first round. We said, no, we're going to break it into quarters. And so, we did that. And now we're in a different situation where it's like, we found there's more money, let's, let's come back real quick. The policy doesn't say that we have to give away every bit of that money every year. We want to give it to the nonprofits. We want them doing good things, but we want a lot of nonprofits doing good things in the community. If we end up with a surplus left at the end of the year with our budget, I can think of a lot of things that can go towards, whether it's Parks and Recs or our youth commission or we got a few roads to fix, you know? We don't have to give the money away just to give the money away. So, when we look at this, at the way organizations are coming back, I think we need to evolve our policy as well to where if you get a, a contribution or a gift from the city to the nonprofits to do things better for the city, that there's a time limit. You can't come back two weeks later and ask for double what you asked for two weeks ago. You gotta wait 10 months. But maybe we carve it out and go, hey, if it's really that special, you know, the, the council unanimous vote can maybe override it and we can do it if it's something gee whiz, that's going to be great for the city and great for our residents as a whole. But to me, it's just, it, it doesn't, it doesn't feel right because they just had the biggest fundraiser of the year. They do a lot of great things, but that slide was shown and two weeks later, here we come back with another ask because they know there was 5,000 for the whole quarter. I, that's, that's my comments and I think we really need to think about that as a council.
Through the mayor?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, looking at this, when I first saw it on the agenda and I read through it, my first question was, is this is for Yuba Sutter and this is $5,000 that is going to, I see it as being used in a lot of different municipalities in Sutter County, the county itself. And this is an enrichment for the city of Yuba City. Saylove does a beautiful job. I've been out and worked with it. However, as Councilmember Shaw stated, they did just ask for us to step up to the plate so that they could put on their event to make the money to make this thing run. Most organizations that I've ever dealt with that come to the table for grants or donations, they get cut out of that once they get awarded it for another year, let's say, or maybe two years, whatever the cycle is. I, I see this as a money grab personally and I'm not in favor of it.
Yeah, I don't think we're going to be unanimous tonight. This is, when this, when this first popped up, I, I wrestled with it as well. It's, I, I don't think anybody can argue that Saylove isn't an incredible organization that really contributes a lot to our community, which it does include Yuba City. I had the opportunity about a week and a half ago to attend. It was a community meeting out at, at Shanghai Bin. And for those of you that weren't aware of it, when the director at, at the time, Jeff Stevens was, was campaigning and he was walking door to door, one of the things that came up out in District Five was the concern that a lot of the roadways, the maintenance district, looks pretty rough out there. And he took it to heart and came to the city and said, you know, maybe we should put on an informational only, informational community meeting. And I showed up at that about halfway through and I was amazed at the community turnout for that. And probably one of the most difficult parts of this job is getting information out to our community. And they did a wonderful job. They had a huge turnout and it was done on, on their own initiative, really. And, and the city participated in that. And so, I, I do see, I, I understand the vice mayor's concerns and they are valid concerns. And maybe moving forward, maybe we need to structure the, the contribution, the contributions and how we make contributions, attributions as a council. But I, I see a lot of benefit to this, this particular request and, and I would be in favor of it.
Hey, huh?
If you want.
Sure. Yeah, I agree with Councilmember Kirchner's comments and I also understand and can appreciate Vice Mayor's comments. I do think that we're in a process right now and that process, you know, it's, it's still relatively fresh and probably to both of your comments, probably does need to be tweaked a bit so that you can't, you know, just keep coming to the, I'm going to use the word trough, but I'm, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not suggesting that Saylove's motive here by any means. Because like Councilmember Kirchner, I, I have personally witnessed the, the very good work that Saylove does. And while there may not be a complete 100% nexus to this particular request, my sense is if we went back and looked at the opportunities that Saylove has taken to better our community in many ways, this is one for me that I can say there, there is a ROI, okay? And I've sat in this chamber and questioned some of the ROI for some of the stuff this council has approved for. I, I can point out where Saylove has gone and done things for our community, for our city, our city and our community. So, for me, I think that, I think it's time to probably take a look, not probably, let's take a look at how this happens so that the appearance at least of a double dip or going to the trough is, you know, if, if it's righteous, great. And, you know, again, as you mentioned, you know, if the council's in, in approval, then that's great too. But I, I like what Saylove's done. I like what Saylove's doing in our city and I would hope that they would continue to do so, so I support this.
Well and short and respectfully, respectfully, I, I agree, Saylove has done wonderful things for the community and one thing you have to look at is look at their purpose, look at their intent. They're, they're beautifying our community, they're beautifying Yuba City, they're, they are making things better and cleaner and safer for the community. Yeah, fine, they came for $2,500, we gave it to them. Well, then now they're coming for $5,000. Because we know the MO, because we know the intent, doesn't mean we automatically have to stand in the way of that happening, of their, of their good intent or they're trying to beautify this community. They are utilizing the process that we have put in place and why fault them for that or question their motive because of that? And we had zero for quarter one, so we still have $15,000 left for the remainder two quarters. I, I really do not see a problem with providing, you know, contributing to their very worthwhile endeavors to beautify the city. Again, I, it's already been said, because of this, we kind of put a light on the idea, maybe we need to tweak the process a little bit, but the decision that we have to make here tonight, for the reasons I've stated, I am also in favor. So, anybody else in the, I'll give one more chance for the public if there's any comment needed. As Sir Tony, come on up.
Thanks. Tony Curlin, 636 Anna Drive, Yuba City. Just a, a comment, this being the first meeting in this quarter, second quarter, does this mean that anybody else who wants a contribution like this would be denied because the $5,000 is already being spent?
I will have to, at someone else answer that specifically. I would think because there was a thing utilized for quarter one, I don't think that's, that amount is dead in the water or the, the total would be reflected as 10,000 left, not 15. But help me out here.
So, it would be first come, first served, but we did not have anything for community contributions. So, we do have a remaining balance of 15,000, so we'd be able to review that application. Did you want to add?
So, there would be 5,000 still available, Tony.
Okay.
Anybody else?
Through the mayor?
Yes, sir.
I think Mr. Curlin brings up a, a good concern, which is if we're going to have a period of time, October to December, then perhaps we should be awarding the money, if you will, in December, which gives everyone a chance, if that, again, this is one of the tweaks, you know, and we can get down the weeds and we can talk about this later, but if the giving period is October through December, then perhaps the requests needed to come in July through September to be, you know, to be awarded for use during that time, or, you know, you know what I'm trying to say?
Ahead of time instead of right at the
Yeah, or at the end of the period.
Yeah.
That's something I think that we can go
At the end of the previous period.
Right.
Yeah, that makes sense too. Any additional comments? We can
And through the mayor.
Yeah, go ahead.
That gets back to the essence of, of Tony, what you said and where we started with this, because we don't want to take away, you know, the other opportunities and that, that was really a burr in our craw in the beginning. You run in the very first meeting, grab it, there's three months ahead of us. So, that's what we really have to, but I, Saylove does a lot of good things. My position has not changed because I, I just don't think it's the right thing to do and we need to, we need to address our policy first. And my opinion might change if we deal with our policy and, and delay this to a later date in this quarter, but as of the first day of this quarter, it's, it's a no, we just gave them 25.
All right, thank you. Yes, sir, come on up. Seth James, if I recall?
Right, that's my name. So, I don't understand why you're
Keep in mind, Mr. James, this is a comment that wouldn't be a question answered thing. If you, if you have a comment, we're happy to hear it.
Giving them money without having a prescribed notion of what they're doing? Is that what I'm hearing?
It was described in the presentation, what they're planning on doing.
So, for a full year is, or four quarters, correct? Is what I'm hearing?
The one quarter.
So, where's the other 20,000? Well, I don't understand what I'm seeing here.
Real, real quick, I'll answer it for you. The, the quarter one, September, July, if you look at the top there, the, right above the, right above the top yellow line, quarter one, July through September, we $20,000 get to this quarter.
You got
For 5,000 it tonight, the, there would be $15,000 available.
Okay. And then and for you know, I don't understand, like
community versus user events or something, help me out. So, yeah, Sutter County Museum had a request, the Alliance they had an event, they requested us to help I believe it was.
So, any random
So, an event.
Any random community can come and ask you for money?
Community organization, yes, sir.
And
Nonprofit organization, yes, sir.
I'm just making sure, I just wanted to make sure I'm looking, know what I'm looking at, you know?
And, yeah, and, yeah, in, in the big picture, when we have a multi, multi-million dollar budget, this isn't a whole heck of a lot of money, but it's still a big deal because there's only so much to go around and every nonprofit in town said they could use all of it. So, we really have to manage, we have to manage those asks.
About that, you know? You know, talk to Ukraine about that.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate it.
All right. We're good for a motion unless there's more discussion.
The mayor?
Yes, sir.
Like to make a motion to adopt a resolution to approve a monetary sponsorship request to Saylove for $5,000.
Second. All right, have a motion and a second to approve their request. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed?
Aye.
Okay, so, did you get that, Sierra? Okay, very good. We'll move on to item number nine. The 2024 Ngar Kurtan Seek Parade Update.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So, for the last couple of meetings, we come before you to give you an update on the planning for the Seek Parade for this year. We did send the Temple President, Mr. Sarb Tiara, a letter a couple of weeks ago outlining some items that were still remaining per our process. I'm happy to report that as of this moment, we have received the traffic control plan, which is a big component of the planning process. That traffic control plan also identified the parking locations, which was another requirement. And then he also sent a copy of the security contract. Once he gets an executed copy, he'll forward that to me and his insurance company will provide the insurance documents 30 days in advance of the event, so we should receive that next week. And so, that's some major hurdles that we've crossed over in terms of the planning for the event and I'm happy with the cooperation and I'm thankful for the cooperation from the temple because as, as expressed previously, this is a community event and we want to see it to be successful and do our part in it. And so, the collaboration is appreciated.
I can't add any more than that because that's exactly what I was going to say. It definitely is appreciated. We're looking forward to this event. Many decades it's been going on, it definitely enriches the community and we're happy that to hear things are moving along in the right direction. And I believe in an upcoming council meeting, we'll be able to have, have an opportunity to recognize Seek Awareness Month as well. So, that's good. Sir, you have been otherwise unavailable, so there's probably not much of an update on your end, eh? All right, all right. Well, that is it for the update. Thank you very much, Diana. We'll move on to number 10, future agenda items. Anybody have anything you'd like to, can add?
Through the mayor?
Yes, sir.
As we were talking earlier, we need to bring back those policies for the community gifting and stuff and revisit that.
Okay, will do. Do we have, we have that written down? Anything else? Any member of the public wishes to bring up anything? Nope, all right, we'll go on to number 11, Reports and Communications, City Managers' Report.
All right, thank you. So, we have some upcoming Measure D presentations. We will have October 12th at Regency Park from 10:00 to 11:00 a.m. October 14th, the evening at 5:30 p.m., we will have a presentation with Sheriff Barnes and Chief Baker, specific to law enforcement in the Happy Park Walton area. That will be at Happy Park at 5:30 p.m. Simultaneously, we will have an event at Northridge Park from 5:30 to 6:30 p.m. And then October 16th, we will be at Lloyd Park from 5:30 to 6:30 p.m. And October 17th, we'll be at Hillcrest Park from 5:30 to 6:30 p.m. And then October 19th, we will be at the north end of Western Parkway. And people ask, why the north end of Western Parkway? It's because it's a, a partial stub of a street that is a gathering place for the community out there. In addition, we have a cleanup day scheduled for October 26th at the old Kmart building site and that's from 8 a.m. to noon. And we're thankful to our partners in this, Sutter County, for allowing us to use the site, Saylove, and then Recology is our big partner in working on this cleanup day. We're expecting it to be a large crowd. And so, Ben Moody, Public Works and Development Services Director, has also been coordinating because there's a food distribution at the same time, so that is coordinated. I don't want anybody to worry about that because it also generates a large crowd. But there's a lot of activities that day and so, just a lot happening in the community over the next few weeks. So, thank you.
Definitely is. All right. Back to council reports, Councilmember Boomgarden.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, very short. None of my committees really had meetings. I did attend your bus tour and I will reserve my comments and let you talk about that.
What was your impression?
Very well attended. I appreciate the work, Ashley and Christie and Diana and Ben and all those who participated in it and seemed like the, the community members that chose to go along were engaged, at least at the stops up here in District Two.
Very good, good plug there. Councilmember Kirchner.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to start with our monthly transit meeting, transit meeting. This was well, we had the the next gen planned Phase One local service. So, what's, what's happening is transit is moving towards more of a micro model in their service and which will, it, 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 it's, it's some future point, I think it's believe 2035, they're going to go all electric. But before that happens, a, a lot of these larger buses are going to go away. And a side comment I, I had with the, the director, and this goes back to the, the Seek Parade that's coming up. The numbers on the Seek Parade on that one Sunday, I believe they moved 28,000 people between the, the festival and River Valley School.
believe they moved 28,000 people between the, the festival and River Valley School. And in the near future, half of those large buses are going to go away to, to more smaller scale buses. And so I think both sides need to start thinking about that. But what we talked about at the, at the meeting was we had a public hearing regarding the recommended changes, and so we had a large group of folks showing up and they were very concerned that they were losing their, their motives to whether it's school, hospitals, whatever. These changes will not be implemented until the first of January, and so staff, transit staff was there to, to answer questions and listen to concerns, but there's going to be a lot of changes and always changes usually pretty scary and especially if, if, if somebody doesn't have a mode of, of transportation. So this, this was very well attended by the public and, yeah, we're moving forward with that. I think I mentioned earlier that I attended the city and Saylove's event out at Shanghai Bin Park. This was initiated by Saylove and cooperated with the city to address the concerns with the, the landscaping district and why certain areas in town look nicer than other areas of town. And it was informational only. I believe it was, Diana, was Mr. Wolf, Josh Wolf, thought he did a great job. I think we need to get him a louder mic next time, but no, he, he did a great job, very well spoken. But again, it was, it was informational only and, and my takeaway from this event was, and I don't know how we overcome this, but there is such, unfortunately, there's a real mistrust of government. And, and this just didn't just occur to me. I'm, I'm, I'm sitting in the back of this audience and before a representative from Saylove or even the city had an opportunity to speak, to answer a question, people were already shaking their head no. They weren't, they, they weren't, they weren't buying it. And again, it was informational only, but I thought it was well attended and, and hopefully people that attended that got their answers, their questions, excuse me, their questions answered. And I think most of them, and I thought, I thought it was, it was, it was a positive event. I attended the Yes on Proposition 36 event with a couple of my cohorts up here. That is a proposition that hopefully straightens out the mess that Proposition 47 got us into. And lastly, I briefly attended the mayor's bus tour and that was well attended. Good job, mayor, and that concludes our report.
All right, council member Piscopo.
Thank you, mayor. Attended my, what was it, North, North State Valley Groundwater over in Willows. We've got a project that's being a water line over on Spythe Avenue that, that directly affects our community from this organization. A lot of, a lot of stuff goes on in the north and the west side of the valley and doesn't really affect us too much. It's mostly the watershed of the Sacramento River, not much from the Feather or, or the Yuba, but it is well worth us participating in it. Went.